Yeah. Yeah, it is. Okay, I'd like to call the administrative meeting of the Planning Commission for May 21st, 2019. For the record, present is Commissioner Vigliotti, Commissioner Staley, Commissioner Watson, Commissioner Petuski, absent is Commissioner Semp, and there are no alternates at this time. Just for the record, the public hearing on 175 Patricia Drive has been canceled as the developer has withdrawn their proposal at the moment. Okay, let's start off with approval of minutes. I believe they were sent out to everyone for April 16th, 2019. Yes, Mr. Watson?
I approve a minute and a bit for 16th.
Thank you, and second, Mr. Staley? And Mr. Vigliotti? And I'll say I'm in favor, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So that passes unanimously. Okay, one down. No zoning referrals? I do have a question on zoning. Do you know when the moratorium that we put into effect on methadone clinics, when that's up?
Not sure. I can check and get back to you on that.
Okay. Well, it was up and then we passed an extension. I think it was a year, but so I think it's coming up, but I don't remember. So we'll find out and go from there. Okay, CAM site plan review, there are none. No 824 reviews. Anything on Section 5.3 of the zoning regulations? Nothing on that, right?
Nothing as of now. Can you hear me? Yeah, nothing as of now.
Okay, erosion and sediment control plan, nothing?
None.
Bond release request?
So I just wanted to give you an update on this. Tina Beto, the Conservation Administrator, had some comments on this for the applicant. She believes that they're still not ready to get the bond released, and I personally went and checked the site too today, and there was one dogwood tree that, you know, they planted on the side of the right-of-way, but it's died, and she wants it to be replaced, and the retention pond needs more vegetation there. So there's a couple of comments that she had that have to be addressed, so we can't release the bond yet. So this has to be postponed for the next meeting, maybe? Or maybe, I don't know, I think it'll take more than that because she wants it to be physically planted and grown.
And grown?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so moving right along. By the way, speaking of Tina Beto.
This is on the bond release?
Yes.
And this was, the representation was with Attorney Vazadi, I think? No?
Yeah, it was the attorney, but the applicant did not fulfill their obligation for the wetlands bond, and even for the engineering side of things, you know, they cannot release the bond, I think. They didn't give me an approval yet.
Okay, so of course.
Unless they give me a letter, I can't, and you give me a letter, I can't take it to finance and get it released.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, so we're not doing anything on that. Just so you know, if you're here for a public hearing on Patricia Drive, no, okay. Then you could stay. We have an audience. Okay, Greenway Project.
From the last that we had, no status update, although I'm trying to pull in the consultants for Complete Streets for our next Planning Commission meeting, invite the Greenway Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee for Complete Streets to our meeting, so we all can look at the Complete Streets design together. They're concurrently being reviewed by DOT, I mean, I think they might have just submitted it, or, you know, planning to submit it, but we just started a meeting this Monday, and we discussed, and it's the design of Complete Streets should be vetted out by the Greenway Committee and the, you know, Technical Advisory Committee.
Good. Mr. Watson?
I just ask a question. Have the plans changed substantially, or in any major ways, from what was the pre-design that we had?
I think they went a little bit far ahead, and they have now more detail, like, you know, as far as where the buffer lane for the bikes goes, and where it ends, and which side of the road will have transit stops and.
So they managed to work in the bus bump outs and all of that?
Yes, yes. So we did have meetings with Greater Bridgeport Regional Transit Authority staff, and I also, again, I drove by this morning to just check the design, how they're doing it in terms of what exists right now. There is one leg that looks very problematic, that's between, under the 95 pass, near the restaurants.
Always.
And I was suggesting that we should talk to the owners of the restaurants on the other side where there's angled parking, to see if we can compensate the loss of parking there. The consultants didn't propose any loss of parking there, but I'm thinking we should talk to them and see if they can have a public plaza or outdoor seating instead of angled parking there, because the angled parking is most of the times empty, but if we didn't have that, the bike lane.
You're talking on parking on the side where the?
Opposite to the sushi place.
Oh, on the opposite side?
Yes.
The Alcoa side?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So I think in the next few days, I would want to reach out to the owners and see, I mean, they may not be willing to, but just present the plans and discuss with them.
In the original Greenway, we had a couple of the owners along there on our committee. I don't know, I did not see them the last time I was there, but they were there for the first round for Complete Streets, and they acknowledged that in all likelihood, those three or four parking spots would have to be.
I think there were 10 or nine spots.
Along the, just along the road?
But they have public parking across the street in the back, it's just, you know, if we can create a pedestrian-scale environment for people to cross across and walk to these restaurants, or have public plazas outside, something that entices people to actually hang out more, then maybe they would be willing to actually let go of that parking. I don't know. I mean, it's a conversation to be had, and I honestly don't know if they would be agreeable to it or not, but, you know, I feel that leg is problematic, and I told the consultants too, if they came to our commission meeting, you know, you guys can look at it and, you know.
That has been debated in every single phase.
Yes. So this is one last look before, you know, even DOT's comments are incorporated, and they move on to the next phase of permits.
Ultimately, that comes down to DOT. They're the ones that are going to say whether we can have parking or not, or we need to lose those spaces. That was what I had heard in all the previous meetings. Eventually, it's a state road, and they're going to say if parking has to be sacrificed for doing the multimodal, that's what they will do. So I.
Yes, that's a deal.
It will either be our curse or a savior in terms of getting the Greenway built, but.
That is a state road, but then the parking is managed by the town, and so there's a little leeway there, but, you know, used by the retailers, and they need more traffic, so it's problematic.
Well, we'll see what happens at the next meeting. Mr. Vigliotti?
Yes, because. Yeah, because the way the bike lane continues is right behind where the angled parking, so when a car is backing up, the bikes are stopping, or, you know, there could be a possibility for a crash, that, you know, a car did not see, and they backed up, and a bike zooms past them, and then the liability mostly rests with the automobile owner than the bicycle owner. So trying to see how we can reduce conflict over there. Yes.
Who is working with the consultants, the committee, or the?
Complete Streets Committee.
There is a Complete Streets Committee, but right now, it's just a staff review. Me and Jay, we both are attending meetings with MetroCog and BSC Group.
And I get that online, who they are? How many?
Who BSC is?
The, on the committee.
It's not a committee.
Complete Streets.
It's a staff review. Complete Streets Committee, I think you guys know better.
I'm actually on the Complete Streets, and I'm on the Greenway Committee. I've been on it since the inception of the Complete Streets Committee, and I actually sat on the bidding process committee for Complete Streets. So I followed along fairly closely. I do not meet with MetroCog, and they're the ones that are handling the logistics for a lot of this with BSR, or whatever their name is.
BSC.
BSC. But in a way, we don't have to worry, because they are tightly constrained by what the DOT says they can do. They're not able to do anything without the approval of the DOT. So we can make our best wishes known, but ultimately, traffic control and multimodal are the two commanding things that are going to happen along Main Street.
And how many are on the committee?
I think there are about eight people.
I would also like to add that when I went to National Planning Conference last month, I got some samples of how these pedestrian crossings can be treated, like brochures on striping and painting of bike lanes, because there is a company that worked on Milford and New Haven's bike lanes. They use thermoplastic material that's heated and compressed, and it's not like the regular paint, and it doesn't get chipped off due to weather, and so I was suggesting, I have a strong feeling that the new bike lanes should be painted green.
And I had suggested that too, because that is part of national standards for Complete Streets, but we were overruled.
No, but this time, they're willing to consider, because the material is different. The paint may come off, but not the thermoplastic, so the consultants are willing to review this. And also for the pedestrian crossings, I've noticed that in California, they use this art deco style pedestrian crossings, which are not regular mundane striping, but, you know, something that adds character and art to our streets, and I think that will actually liven up the whole town center in and nearby.
And Florida also.
Yes.
Many areas.
Many areas, yes. So they're willing to consider. It's not as pricey as we think it is, so our next steps are, once we get through this preliminary design, to recommend materials. GBRT is willing to invest in new transit stops that are more sophisticated than what you see right now with shelters and other things, and pocket parks. So it's going to be really beautiful if everything's implemented the way we plan.
Are they taking into account this, what we saw a couple months ago, the contract regarding the bikes, the city bikes, or?
Oh, yes. I'm working with the town attorney on that, which is one of the other items on our agenda, I think. He's currently reviewing the request for information for the pilot project. I just sent him this today, so if he okay's it, then maybe we would have a pilot project, and maybe one of the locations could be at the town center.
Okay. Coastal Resiliency Plan?
We have nothing. We have a CIRCA presentation tomorrow, Circummins Connecticut Institute for Resilience and Climate Adaptation. They are planning to do a coastal resiliency plan for Fairfield and New Haven Counties, and they're having this event tomorrow for Fairfield and New Haven County municipal officials. So Jay and I are going and presenting on behalf of Stratford. I think New Haven staff is coming, and I think there's one more staff that's coming from South Central Connecticut Region, the regional planners. So after that, maybe they will embark on a regional coastal resiliency plan for Fairfield and New Haven Counties. So our pitch is to recommend more advanced planning and technical analysis for Stratford, because we already have the baseline planning, but we need more technicality in terms of from what point to what point should the bomb go, how much should be the elevations, things that are more, you know, more predictable. C-I-R-C-A.
They're the state, they're the university that has been given state authority to develop resiliency plans within Connecticut. Every state has to pick a university to develop an institute, so we have, I don't know if it's Southern Connecticut or whatever, has developed, is developing our resiliency plans. One question about that. In our, in the report that we did in 2017, I think it was 2017, our resiliency plan identified critical structures, the most critical projects that we needed to begin working on. And any question that I've asked of anybody, the primary project that needs to be accomplished immediately, besides our electric grids, which are being taken care of by UI and by Metro North, but our sewer system does not have a dike that is high enough to, it barely covered us through sanding. We were within inches of it being overflowed. We are in serious trouble when the next big storm comes, which it will come, and they identified that as the singular project that needs to happen immediately, almost on an emergency basis. I hope that when you guys go to speak with anybody, that that will be identified as a standout, standalone project, because we are going to regret that if we end up losing all of our investment in our sewer.
Are you talking about the water pollution control facility?
Yeah.
Certainly. We, John Casey?
Yes.
And I have been chasing FEMA, because John has applied for a pre-disaster mitigation grant money for that project, and it's been like under review for the past six months, and I'm trying to, you know, chase them, and John's been copied on his emails, just to make sure that, you know, we get a nod to implement, and they said by May 2nd, we will get to hear something. We haven't heard anything yet. Hopefully, we should get a positive response in doing this. I hope so. But yes, we have identified that as a high priority project, and for the plans for implementation slide that we were going to discuss.
Well, it's not the, it's, I mean, it's not a, it is the highest priority project.
Okay.
We could end up with 50,000 people without sewers if we end up losing our sewer system, which we would if it was inundated. So keep supporting John. I know he's, I know this is important to him, and he's, I've talked to him about it several times, but it's something that should not just slip by.
Okay, moving on to other items, the digital sign draft ordinance, which Susmita got us down to a two-page document, and it has a pretty picture on it of a sign. So that's what, those two pages are really what we're looking at at this point, with the aim, hopefully tonight, of getting through this so that we can have a final draft, which Susmita can send through to the various departments for their input. So, do people have that? Yes, you got it.
If you want, I can give you a brief overview of this.
Yeah.
So I started off by including a definition on what an electronic message sign is, for those who are not clear, and then that will go under the definitions portion of the zoning ordinance. And the ordinance language itself, I put it underneath, and basically, yes.
Why don't we go through the whole thing, and, or at least go by sections? So let's start with the definition, and then you can ask some questions on that, and then we can go on to.
My apologies, I cannot find, it is, it's in the pile that you?
It was in the last one, and maybe that's why you don't have it.
I don't have it with me, sorry.
Do you want me to make a copy and bring it?
No, I'll look over it.
Okay.
If I can look over your shoulder.
So let's start with the definition.
With the definitions, I just said it's a sign displaying any alphanumeric character against a solid color contrasting background, characters of which can be electronically changed by remote or automatic means. Each such sign should be considered on-premise signs if all the messages displayed on the sign relate to on-premise activities. So any questions there, or concerns?
Do we have questions?
Yes, for definitions.
For definitions.
Yes. This is what I was concerned about, with, is this for the town of Stratford areas where we're going to eliminate signage and only have digital signage? Or, because it seems like it's for everyone.
I think I mentioned in the ordinance language, right off under the first bullet, which says, "Put into Town Hall and Paradise Green locations." So I specified the location. So these are the only two locations where this goes.
All right, but this says, "Such signs shall be considered on-premise signs if the message displayed on the sign relates to on-premise activities."
Yes, you are correct, and I try to keep it general for now, so that we don't have to go back and re-revise the ordinance if somebody, you know, in future wants to put it on a private property, but if you want me to take it off, I can take it off.
I have no problem, I just, we have to address both, though.
Yes. So the language I kept it general, but then I said it's specific to these two locations for now.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
May I comment? Since we are, these two locations happen to be town property. Can't we just say town property? Because the moment that, say, if we wanted to take the right-of-way by the train station and put a sign there eventually, then we're going to have to come back in here and revise this, or do an exception for that. Wouldn't it make better sense to say we're reserving these decisions for town property only? It makes it very clear to anybody else, no, we're not allowing your restaurant or whatever to have an electronic sign.
That's a call that you all have to make with the mayor. I don't know, because some departments, like Fire Department is of its own, Health Department is of its own, that's all town property, schools are town properties. So now you're broadening the definition, and I don't know, you know, if there are organizations that may be concerned, because we have to seek their input before we just generalize everyone. So if you're putting schools, we need to talk to Board of Ed, see, you know, if they're okay with it.
If I may, there should possibly be two regulations or an amendment to this, or a second part to it, if we consider going into, digital signage is coming, it's here, it's going to continue.
This is same as digital signage. This is electronic message sign is nothing but digital signage.
Right, but I'm talking about private entities.
Oh, if a private, if we go that far of allowing private properties, then, you know, we can amend the language here. We don't have to have a part two for this.
Thank you.
We can just add one sentencing. It is now included on private property too, but I don't think the town is interested in private property, for obvious reasons. You don't want it to look, you know, all like New York City or Manhattan.
Yeah, I think Mr. Staley is trying to make sure that this does not open up the door for private.
It's not. At this point, it's only Town Hall and Paradise Green.
Well, and that's one change that needs to make. It should be West Broad Green and Paradise Green.
West Broad Green.
Yeah. I don't have a problem if we add Town Hall, but.
That's what I'm saying is, then maybe we should say Paradise and Broad Street, and other locations that planning should allow on other town-owned property, or something like that.
I think what Susmita is getting to is, if you make it too broad, like all town properties, then a school could ask for it, anybody could ask for it, and really, they'd have to grant it as long as they conform to the regulations. And, you know, when this goes out as a final draft, the school system may come back and say, oh, no, we don't want to do that, or we don't want that at, I don't know, what other town property.
We're not saying that they have to do it. What we're saying is, if you're going to do it, these are our rules that you must live by.
Right, but it opens up the possibility, and it make, it may mean that this whole thing gets scrapped, because people get nervous that it could be everywhere.
Okay.
That, I think, is the concern. We could always go back and expand, but it's hard to contract.
Then I would suggest this not be written in any kind of a general way, that it be written specifically only for these two locations, period. And that we say, five years from now, we look and see, is this something that was highly functional? And do we want to expand it? Otherwise, we're just, we're leaving it open for someone to come in and start complaining about me too, in some kind of way.
Yeah.
So I'm going to take out that line under definitions, the last line, which says such shine, a sign shall be considered on-premise signs, so that it takes away that confusion and just leaves it, like, you know, to West Broad Green and Paradise Green locations only.
This is under definitions?
Yes, under definitions, I'm only keeping the first line, and I'm going to eliminate the second one, because.
Taking a sign.
About on-premise signs, because now we're not talking about private property.
Right.
So shall I go ahead with the ordinance language?
Yeah.
Okay. So the first one defines where, which locations, so put into West Broad Green and Paradise Green. I noted the correction that Pat just mentioned, I mean, now, Commission Chair just mentioned. And so the sign has to be mounted on ground and covering not more than 50% of the area of the ground sign. I know that when the Chair mentioned initially that she was interested in something like that, she was looking to have a sign that's ground-mounted and along the lines of the image that you can see on this. So I made sure that that is properly addressed. Each individual message shall remain in place for a minimum of five seconds, and the standard, you know, most communities adopted this standard, and any change is accomplished within one second, and occurs simultaneously over the entire face of the variable. So again, I tried to refer to our non-conforming users under Section 14 for signs, signs which constitute non-conforming users, but then now that we are taking out the general language, I can take this off, because we're not talking about non-conforming users anymore. We're only limiting it to town center. So I'll take this line off. And second bullet, "Such signs shall display only a static message consisting of a message and background, including all graphics. The static message shall not change more than once every five seconds and the message in its entirety." It's basically repeating what I said in the first bullet, so I think I can take that off too, if you want me to, because it's already been mentioned in the first bullet.
Kind of redundant.
Yeah. "No such sign may be oriented to face any residentially zoned property." I'm making it clear, we don't have any residentially zoned property along this West Broad and Paradise Green. The intensity of display, now this one, I.
Well.
Sorry?
We do have residential property around Paradise.
Yeah, you're right.
So we have to be very careful about.
Well, it shouldn't face them, so.
Yeah, so if it's at the point, okay.
Facing north?
Facing the commercial area, not the residential.
That whole row of houses, are those all commercial?
Yeah, but it's not facing them.
It's on the other side.
It's perpendicular to them.
And goes off.
Yeah, and it faces those traveling north on Main Street, or if they turn to go north on Parada.
So if they're, if they're at Vazey's, if they're at Vazey's, they're going to see the sign from that side.
Yes.
The opposite side will not have a sign.
Yes.
Coming down will not have a sign.
No, they could have a sign. It would be two-sided.
Okay.
It's.
One on the front and one on the back.
No, we're talking about Paradise Green. If you have the V, and this is Main, and this is Huntington.
Huntington, right.
Okay. The sign goes that way. So there's signage here, and there's signage here.
That, I don't think we need.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, you will, actually.
While driving by.
I think you would see it.
If you're stopped at the light, which is over here, it's over here, okay? You still could see it. It's, you know, it's something you can see a bit of a distance, not, you should be able to see this side. If you're coming down here and you end up parked on either side here, you could see it this side. So if you look at it now, all those signs are facing Main and Huntington Road. They're facing it. That's not the best way to see them.
No, you can't. I gave you pictures of them.
If you turn them, okay. If you turn them, okay, you can see them.
No, no, I'll take a picture for you.
Okay.
There's polls there, there's, there's a lot going on there.
Oh, there's, there, yeah, it depends on where on the point you put it. You know, you have to-
It's gotta be better than the current fifteen, fifteen sets of signs which no one can read. And if, if we are saying that it must be an architecturally interesting signage piece, this, what I see here, is very much like the early proposals that we had for, for the Greens Complete Streets location finders or entry points, so it actually ties very much into what would be envisioned when Complete Streets connects up there anyhow. So, it would be a great way to have a gateway there. I just think we should look very carefully because the Huntington houses are residential.
Right.
And they might have cause to complain if we're not very careful.
Well, it won't be facing them.
As you go further back from it, it will be closer to facing them, do you understand what I'm saying?
If you go in-
The closer you go back up Huntington, up into here,
Yeah.
this sign suddenly becomes-
Yeah.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I know with electronics, there's a thirty percent drop off as you move out of the range of motion. And the ambient light on these are lower than normal, so it might not be a problem.
Mr. Staley's right, there are some trees there, they eventually do come into the-
And there are some posts and stairs.
Yeah, they do come into play.
And the stoplight is all the way by, people's banks are far away.
No, there's another one.
Yeah, yeah.
It's an arrow.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, the way the sign can be placed could be, you know, reviewed by the staff and then applicant bring something over and, you know, based on what is feasible, we can encourage them to do it in the way it complies with the ordinance language. So number four, the intensity of the display, I reviewed this online and I noticed that for the sunshine, the intensity level is five thousand nits. So when you're talking about anything over five thousand, you mean that during daytime, you want more brighter illumination? And during nighttime, it's almost half, cut down half and make it more, you know, soothing to the eye. So, that's comparative comparison there, and this has been tested and tried in another community and I just, you know, taken it off of there.
Good.
So, mm-hmm.
Yep.
Please? You got ahead of me.
Okay, so-
That's not hard, but the, in reading the ordinance with the variances, when I read this, it keeps on telling me this is for everybody, not just the town of Stratford.
Well, don't forget she's taking out part of the first paragraph, number one.
About, under ordinances.
She's taking out part of this.
Yeah.
So we're taking quite a bit out of-
Out of number one, I have struck everything after the sixth line, I think after the electronic message sign, the new line that starts which says signs which constitute non-conforming users. I'm taking off everything there, I'm taking off the second bullet, I'm just keeping the third and the fourth one. So I'm just talking now about the intensity of display for those-
So there's no confusion on the matter?
Right.
Yeah.
The aim is strictly Paradise Green and-
And West Broad Green. Number five, prior to the issuance of a permit, the applicant shall provide a written certification from the sign manufacturer that the light intensity has been factory preset not to exceed the level specified in the chart above. So, that way we know that it complies, and the intensity level is protected from end user manipulation by password protected software or other method deemed appropriate by the department. So, we don't know yet which department it will be, although I'm assuming it'll be something along the lines of Technology Department. But I kept, tried to keep it general there, just giving some leeway for the town to decide which department should operate this. The characters must be lighted against a darker or less luminous background. The sign owner shall provide on the application for a permit for a variable electronic message sign the contact information in case there is any malfunction, and if the town finds that the sign has malfunctioned, the owner of the sign within twenty-four hours of request by the town shall correct the malfunction or power off the sign. So, you know, we can move on to the next message, yes.
You mentioned twice the owner of the sign, isn't the town gonna be the owner?
No, it will be a private entity, the town is only gonna operate it, I think. In some cases, yes, if the town chooses to be the owner, yes, but to keep it general, like, it could be a private entity or it could be, you know, the town itself.
In the beginning, in the beginning, the, we talked about, it was gonna be the town, obviously, we thought, or I thought. And, we're gonna get someone to sponsor and offset the cost by using their logo, which is why, or maybe more than one logo, which is why I thought maybe we should not restrict ourselves from imagery.
What do you mean imagery?
Logos.
Say we want to put a logo up there for one, for five seconds, thank you, or whatever, whatever. The Town of Stratford logo, we'll be using it for emergency situations.
I would think that a sponsor who would give that kind of money would want to have a more permanent logo.
On the backside if we don't use that.
Well, like you have the head of the-
UI.
Yeah.
You, you, in that circle, that would be the sponsor, or on these posts, they would have a sponsor if there's many sponsors.
Well, if it's, it's the towns, I don't think we should restrict imagery, graphics, that's nature.
Well, the question that may come up with that is the graphics may become too distractful to the drivers.
Ah, okay, stay off ninety-five.
Yeah, yeah.
Can, may I, may I comment, 'cause I spent half of my career being a communicator, a graphics communicator, text and graphics. Logos are designed to be identifiable, you see the AT&amp;T logo and you know we're talking phones, communication. So, I think that you could say corp, the corporate logo in here is a category and allow that to happen. The town, the official logos, because that's half the, that's half the tail that you're trying to communicate.
I don't see-
Parks and Rec is doing this event, do you know what I mean? There are, it's a, it's a identifiable way that people can quickly understand something without having to even read sometimes.
Yeah, my thought was just trying not to hand off ourselves too tight.
Yes, but I don't see anything here that restricts a logo or a graphic.
It, it just won't flash.
It's saying it's only text, lines, I think four.
Where does it say that it's only text?
It was just saying in the beginning.
It doesn't say it's only text, it talks about the characters, yes, but it doesn't say anything about graphics or logos or elimination of those. In fact, it doesn't say anything about them.
Alphanumeric characters.
That talks about how the text should be, but it doesn't talk anything about graphics.
Well, no, it says displaying only alphanumeric characters against a solid color contrasting background.
Where are you seeing that?
I'm reading the very opening definition.
Definition, okay.
Oh, okay.
So you basically are saying you want a, the equivalent of a flashing DOT, of a non-flashing DOT electronic sign. If that's what we want, then-
Okay, so we can alter the definition maybe and say a sign displaying a corporate logo, a business logo, or, and, or, any alphanumeric characters, so you're including both now.
How about just a logo, because-
A logo and only alphanumeric characters.
Yeah, 'cause-
And/or, I would say, sometimes people may not have a logo.
Right.
The sign is gonna be formatted digitally, so you can do anything you want, it's just a model.
Okay.
I would just add, we don't want businesses thinking they can take out, you know, advertising signs for businesses. Which becomes one of my questions, is, it doesn't say in here anywhere about being signs for not-for-profits. Or, maybe I missed it.
I think we don't know who will come in, and we cannot discriminate. So I will just keep it like any electronic message on the sign, they have to pay, they can promote. As long as they comply with the regulation, and as long as, you know, they're taking care of stuff that has to be taken care of, if there's a malfunction, they have to come and fix it or it'll be taken, taken off. And they'll have a certain timeframe during which they can display. You cannot say this one can do it and that one cannot do it.
Well, I, I think you can limit it to not-for-profits, can't you?
I'm not sure if you-
As against business advertising.
I have to, I have to check into the legality of it, I won't say yes or no, it may not be legal, so let me check if we can just, you know.
Well, I, I-
I'm sure there are many of these signs at, in municipalities, and they do not allow businesses to advertise on them.
They only do things that are social in nature.
Okay, let me check with the attorney.
I would never wanna see a commercial sign in Paradise Green, that's not the purpose of Paradise Green.
Right.
Because it may, like, the First Amendment writes, I don't know, there was some case law on billboards too, right? So I have to check with the town attorney on this.
Okay, well, if you could check into that. The other thing that I think should be in here is that if it malfunctions, that an automatic sign, agreed upon sign comes up, like, welcome to the Town of Stratford. So it malfunctions, but, and they can, they can do this, they can program it that if something happens, welcome to the Town of Stratford comes up and that's all that's seen.
Now, that's something, we can put it in a vendor agreement, that doesn't have to be in the ordinance.
Okay.
The ordinance is more about the size, the display, the flashing, the lumini, you know, luminous intensity.
Okay.
But what goes in it, if it malfunctions, that's something we can, you know, once we select a vendor, we can tell him that, you know, if it malfunctions, we want this automatic message to be displayed.
Right, okay, as long as that is-
You do have a note in there about twenty-four hours.
Yes.
But the, we should have no liability. These are nonprofits mostly unless they're a Town of Stratford themselves.
Well, that's the aim, yeah.
And, my recommendation would be, they send it in a format usable, it's there. If they put the wrong date down, it's not our fault.
That could be in the agreement, not in the ordinance, but in the agreement as you're talking about the malfunction, okay.
So, after the, this, the next section is all about the process. I mean, how would this be submitted, who will review it, how we would ensure that it complies, who would take the permit fees? So, I think it should go through our planning and zoning office because we already enforce signs in the town. So this is just an extension of the signs ordinance. And then, after that, once they would pay permit fee, we would set a permit fee amount based on council recommendation. And then, once the permit fees are paid, the Z E O grants them this. And all appeals should go through the town's zoning board of appeals, if anything is, you know, not going right. And, when does the permit become null and void after ninety days of issuance? So essentially, if somebody wants to put something during summer, the whole three months, they can do it, as long as they pay for it. And then, you know, it can be taken, whenever they decide to, they can put in those three months and then it can be taken off later. That way, it's revenue generating, and, you know, we can set fees for how many times during those three months they can maximum put it. You know, they may obtain a permit right now, but may not choose to do anything till the end of the summer. So, they don't have to come back again and again, yes.
The, I'm still having a little problem with the generalization. But the signage under application, section you're on now, you've got a, you have the name, telephone number, corporation, firm, association. It still sounds like it's general.
Yeah, it should really-
It is general because it could be-
It's not Paradise Green and West Broad.
It's not West Broad.
I mean, Main Street.
Town Hall and-
No, the applicant means here the vendor. If it's not the town-owned managed sign and somebody else is coming to put a sign on the West Broad or Paradise Green locations and applying for a permit, then we're asking them to give their name, address, and telephone number so we can contact them.
I, I think we are creating a wormhole for ourselves here, quite honestly. Because we are trying to do everything in one piece of writing. What we originally talked about doing a year ago was putting up a test to see if this would help alleviate a communications problem that not-for-profits in town were having. A place where they could, where townspeople could go and look for messages of what's happening. Essentially, electronic calendar of what events are gonna be happening this week. So what we are doing here is everything but that, because that's not in this at all, I don't read that in this. Nowhere does it say that the town is electing to do this, these two pieces, as a demonstration of how well does this work in terms of creating an electronic town bulletin board, that we can, after a period of time, two years or three years, that we can determine, is this something we want to expand? When we originally discussed this, all of our discussions earlier, correct me if I'm wrong, were specifically that we would undertake this as planning because it's something that is sorely a problem, not just in terms of the visual garbage that is all over town, but also in terms of the fact that we are having harder and harder trouble having an avenue for citizens to find out what's happening. If they don't go to the town website, they don't know what's happening. And the only thing we can do is, half the signs that are put up are not-for-profits, and the other half are town-sponsored events. Besides, once you remove all of the home, home renovation companies, that's what, or the, you know, tarot card readers, then that's what the bulk of all the other signs are, it's people who have sports camps, it's not-for-profits who have events that are happening all over the place. We needed a place that we could have those congregate, where people could begin to start looking and saying, what's happening right now in my town? So I just think that we should go back and look at this and say, are we accomplishing that? I know that we still have to fund it, so the idea of finding a sponsor for it would make sense, but I do not wanna see an electronic sign in any of these locations that is advertising a company in this town. I think that is wrong, that is exactly what Stratford doesn't need. We need things that make Stratford look like it's a town, it's a livable town, that cares about its social, its social events and that, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, can I just interrupt once again, I, I think we both are talking two different things here. You're talking, like, you know, about your intent to eliminate paper display signs and just the clutter on these locations and have two electronic signs displayed on these locations. But, there is a process, there is a law, that, you know, you can't just put anything anywhere, you need an ordinance to enforce something on these properties, and that's why we have the ordinance. And the ordinance has to be written in a way that makes sense legally, and, you know, when I'm writing an ordinance, I'm looking at it from a land use standpoint, not on an owner's standpoint. Nowhere in our zoning ordinance, we have language that says such and such an owner can do this, but we only say what kind of land uses where and how they should be regulated or enforced. Secondly-
Would you like to, I could table this?
Well, I'd like to get everything out in discussion, go ahead.
And secondly, so I agree that we have to make those two locations prominent, and we tried our every best way to eliminate everything else in the, under number one where we say it's not Town Hall, it's just West Broad Green and Paradise Green, and we're, we're gonna make it more prominent in the way we write it. In terms of application for the permit, we don't know who will be the owner at this point. We don't know if it will be the town that will choose to put those signs on its own by seeking a sponsor, or it will be a private vendor who would be interested to come and put the sign. So, if the- if the town chooses to put the signs on its own through some donations or, you know, whatever maybe the means, then the application would still be from the town public works. That will be the applicant, because they're the ones, somebody has to manage it, somebody has to apply for the permit and, you know, maybe the fees would be waived or something because it's a town property. But there should be a permit associated with it to show.
And that's fine. It's like an 824 review.
It's like an 824 review, exactly.
It, it's the same sort of thing. But I also think that the only person who can put something on town property is the town.
Exactly. And I-
They could get a sponsor.
Mm-hmm.
But it's still the town who's the applicant. So if we gear all of this to the town, the town is the applicant.
Well, we can, we just said it's an applicant. It could be town or it could be anybody else. We don't have to say name, address, and telephone number of the town staff. We just keep it as applicant and leave it. Anybody can be an applicant in this.
Yes, but we could also eliminate number two, because we don't care about location on building structure.
That's correct.
Number three, because it's not in nearby building structures or property.
I think positioning is important, like where, like, for example, for Paradise Green, you want to show how far it is from residential and the way you position.
But the applicant would, would show that.
Yes. So the applicant would show where the sign would be positioned in relation to nearby buildings.
All right. So we'll leave number three.
Number three would be there. Just the number two will be gone. And number four, tree scale drawings of plans and specifications, method of construction and attachment to the ground. This is pretty straightforward. We need to know how they're going to-
Five, five should be gone.
Number five can go.
Number five can go, yes. Number six-
Number six.
-timeframe for which the display message is requested, yes. That's correct. Number seven, yes.
Hold on, hold on.
No. Timeline for the display message, for the message or for the unit?
For the message. If somebody is going to put the message in that, if there are five nonprofits coming in, they would tell us which nonprofit is putting in for how much, the message.
For how long.
For how long, I mean.
So, you know, Main Street Festival is coming up in two weeks. We want it to be on the sign for two weeks.
Right.
We don't want it three weeks, because if it goes three weeks, the event has occurred.
But what, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, you're mixing everything all together.
Uh-huh. I understand your confusion.
You're, you're, you're saying to the person who's going to come in and put the sign in, these are what we require you to do. And you're also including in there what you want of the person who's going to be buying the advertising or be asking for the advertising.
Maybe that could be separated.
It's two different things.
Yes. I think number six should be eliminated and it should be part of the vendor agreement.
But what you do need to say is, to the sign, that what we will expect you to do is to develop a program and develop, show us clearly the means by which we can solicit local nonprofits from Stratford to, and the time, the times, a sensible time scale. But dear chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, we had talked about this being something that would be not, it would cost the nonprofits a penny, because the nonprofits don't have the money.
Well, no, we had, we had talked about maybe having a minimal fee, so, kind of like a nuisance fee.
Okay.
You know, so that we're not getting all kinds of requests that, you know-
And to train them to be orderly about it.
Right. You know-
So then maybe what we have to ask is whoever is setting this up and managing it, if it's not the town. But we need to say, you need to show us a, how you will develop your schedule, how you will develop your fee for that, and what the duration of each sign, what the rotation will be, how often you will show the town logo welcoming them to the town.
Well, I think some of that can be done within the departments, or at least their recommendations can come from the departments. You know, I don't think we have to answer every single question.
Yes. I think I would take off number six and then, you know, like Mr. Watson suggested, in the end, require a vendor agreement or something that shows the schedule, messaging, method, and timeframe, something to that effect. So I'm going to make a note of it.
So there would be a, a fourth section.
No, just a last line, show vendor agreement indicating number of messages.
So are you indicating, are you, are you saying that the, all right, I want to put something on a nonprofit and I go through the proper channels and I send a JPEG, I send whatever you like, and you, it's reviewed to see if it's appropriate.
Yeah.
And it's put on, it's all digital, so you put the date on and the date you want it to come off and you never touch it again. It's automatic. So-
Right. That's how the software works.
But you're going to end up adding new things all the time.
Right.
And it's going to, you're going to say, these things rotate every five seconds.
So how are you going to make a area guidelines for the nonprofits, so to speak?
It's not our purview. We are only talking about the sign itself, how it should be, where it should be, what size, and how bright. Is it going to intrude into residential areas during nighttime? The, I mean, spill-over light effect, things like that. Now, the actual message itself, on what it go, what goes in there and what type of nonprofits, that have to be administered through the vendor agreement by the department that manages the sign. So if the public works, or, for example, decides to put it on, then it's, public works has to have an agreement in place with the vendor, who, and, you know, call all nonprofits, maybe through request for proposals or something, and, you know, advertise and give them, you know, a chance to put their messages in. But the planning and zoning will give actual permit to put the sign, that's all.
Well, maybe I can use an analogy. There is an ordinance that allows townspeople to use picnic areas in the Town of Stratford. Okay? The ordinance exists, it tells you what you could do at those picnic areas and what you cannot do. The actual process, though, is you go to the recreation department and you fill out an application that was written and developed by the recreation department and the Parks and Recreation Committee. Okay? But there are two separate processes.
Okay.
One was the ordinance to allow the, in this case, the sign to exist on West Broad and Paradise Green. And then the second is the actual process of putting your message on the sign. Okay? Where it says here, application for the electronic sign permit, that's the physical sign itself, not the message.
I think that's where we need to be very clear-
Yeah.
-with what we're doing here. And we need to make sure that the vendor, if we are looking at, whether it's the town or an outside vendor, that they understand that they need to work with one of our departments closely to make sure that, otherwise, they're going to end up with a non-functioning sign if they don't work closely enough to get-
Right.
-the data in there consistently and with the right kind of scaled text. So someone needs to develop what size font do you need to use, how many, what's the maximum number of words you can have. All those kinds of things needs to be on a-
Yeah. And, and some of that, we can't answer now, because we don't know what the sign actually looks like-
Right.
-and what it's capable of doing. So until the actual sign is put in place and purchased-
I love this.
Well, and, but it depends on the manufacturer, whoever goes in there, what the sign can do, how many lines it can have, what kind of graphics it's capable of, of handling. That, though, goes into the permit process, not the ordinance process. Okay? So I think we're getting a little bit too much into the weeds, which I think we're all interested in, and we want to see it for nonprofits. But Sussmeath is just trying to get the ordinance done. That's the main thing.
So, yes, with that, I summarized everything. And we pretty much took everything into account here when we discussed. I will go back and revise, revise this and send a revised copy for your review. Now that you're clear, you can, you know, reread it and send me any further edits or comments. And then I will also circulate it to the other departments, economic department, to the mayor's office, and other related, public works and other related departments. Get their feedback and come back to the next meeting with a more thorough, revised, tightened version of this.
Yeah.
Yes.
Basically, we'll be taking out anything that really goes to the process of putting your message on the sign. Only about how the physical sign is placed at West Broad and Paradise Green.
Okay.
So we-
Can we include two things or think seriously about two things?
Sure.
A specific part in here that talks about what, what is the benefit to a sponsor?
We can't talk about that in the ordinance.
Not in the ordinance.
You can't say that this, okay.
Not in the ordinance.
The ordinance is more about physical location.
And can you also talk about specifically the purpose, the audience that this is for?
I think the purpose, yeah.
Well, I think that needs to be in there so that we know that we are not doing this for Midas Muffler. We are doing this for-
Right.
Nonprofit events.
Nonprofit events.
Can we do that?
Yes. I could, when I put under the definition somewhere, I could tweak and do it, maybe I'll figure out a way to do that.
I, I think that will really make a lot of sense, but I just wish that we could get some, in there somewhere that, that, because then we could actually have an ordinance that encourages someone to come in and sponsor it, like a, like a football stadium. We could get, if we could say that commercial, commercial people will not have access to the board, but they do have access to naming rights.
Yes, and I keep saying-
On the physical structure.
Yes. And I keep saying that who can do what inside the sign is a vendor agreement.
That's the next part.
But what the sign is going to look like, where and how it should look like, that's the physical aspect. That's the land use. So planning and zoning does not go into, for example, property rights, like if two neighbors are fighting, we don't go in between. Or if somebody doesn't like somebody to locate next door. That's not something that we dictate. That's a tenant agreement. That's a rental agreement between the owner and the tenant. But all we say is what type of use, where, how compatible it can be to the neighboring uses. So in this case, what type of sign, whether it's ground-mounted, wall-mounted, freestanding, what's the size, what's the illumination going to be, is there a spill-over effect? And, you know, even the message, like you said, how the message should be displayed, I think that should go into the vendor agreement too. And I would try to, you know, clean it up a little bit more, so it more relates to the physical aspect. And then specify that we definitely would require, as part of the review, a vendor agreement that specifies all these details.
Right.
One last question. The, the, the sign itself, you're saying that the, the sign that is mounted on the ground, or it's got to be mounted in something, right?
Like you see in the image, they have the beautiful-
You're saying 50% of the area of the ground sign.
Yes. Like, if you see the image, that's pretty self-explanatory, like you have some structure that is like beautified and in character with the surroundings, maybe.
Okay, so this sign, which is all black, right?
Mm-hmm.
Characters, that's only 50% of the total?
Yes.
Ground?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
We don't want some gigantic billboard on West Broad.
Well, I know. It's just that, that's pretty big compared to this. 50%? Enough. I said enough.
Are, are we presenting this to the Complete Streets design team also? Is this something that they, could you suggest this? Because I know that Complete Streets, the, the idea of gateways was a critical component of Complete Streets.
Yes.
If we can find a way to key these into what they're doing for Complete Streets, then we don't have a, we don't have a Complete Street yet to Paradise, but that's phase two.
Yeah. My only concern is it would delay the whole thing, because Complete Streets is not that far along yet. They're still waiting for street approvals and all that. This is just an ordinance. This is not implementation. So-
I'm just saying, to get them, to get their buy-in so that they can incorporate it in their own design.
Okay, I can run it by them.
Because I know that the Broad Street, there was supposed to be a gateway right before the circle that-
Well, there was.
Right.
There was a sign listed.
Because of dollars, it didn't get in there.
It got taken down for some reason, but it, there actually was a sign there for a number of years that listed every Rotary, Kiwanis, every group in town had a little logo on this board.
Yeah, yeah.
So you, it was like a billboard. I don't know why it got, where it went or what happened to it. But anyway, we have Complete Streets coming to our next meeting, so we actually can just mention it to them as well.
All right, if you want.
Thank you.
I can send the draft once. I'm sending to other departments. I can send it to everybody else, too.
Okay. It's probably an overlap, anyway. Okay. So with, Sussmeath is going to send us out a clean copy with the changes made and send that final draft-
Sure.
-to the different departments. So we can finalize this before some of us get off this commission.
And can we thank you for your hard work?
Yes.
Certainly. Thank you very much. I mean, you're a great team.
I know. It's, it's a lot of work.
Okay, moving along. Text amendment for section 4.1.3 to a lot of commercial kitchens. Anything on that?
Tabled for now.
Okay. Moving right along. MetroCog bike share program.
So like I just said, I have sent the request for information draft language to the town attorney to review and suggest any liability issues associated with it. Once he gets back to me, I will try to address the concerns and comments. And the mayor is very interested in doing a pilot project in the town for six locations with roughly five to six bikes at each location. And I'm really trying hard to get it done as soon as possible so we can have something during the summer that people can enjoy.
Okay, great. That's moving along. That's great. Any questions on that? Otherwise, we'll go to discussion on Shakespeare property. As we know, there is a task force. Sussmeath is deeply involved in that task force. But I wanted to kind of poll the commissioners to see if they wanted to make some, as a commission, some suggestions to the task force. My aim specifically was to go through the P O C D and make, help the task force to be aware that we do have a plan of conservation and development and that the Shakespeare property is mentioned in that conservation. And these, I pulled out, these are the comments that are in the plan of conservation and development, to make them aware that this has been vetted. You know, the plan was done 2009?
2013?
13?
Or 14, I think. Actually, 2014 Plan of Conservation.
So some thoughts have been given to it, which were vetted through the, the general public. Very similar processes, what you went through. And so I want them to be aware of the plan of conservation and development and, and what it indicates. And if there was anything else, we could add it to it. Mr. Watson?
You're talking, speaking about the document here that Jay, Jay has-
No.
You're talking about-
What I just sent over.
The preview.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
My apologies.
Oh.
My apologies.
These are just, I obviously would want to put this in a letter format. I just wanted to pull out all the items.
Yeah, if you would like, as a chair of the planning commission, I can put it on the letterhead of the planning commission and you may want to sign it.
Yeah.
And just, you know, tailor it to more like a letter.
Yeah.
And say, "Dear Shakespeare Task Force Committee, on behalf of the planning commission, I'm submitting our written comments for-"
Yeah, for their consideration.
"-to your review."
Yeah. If we all agree.
I think this is very good. And I, you're not editorializing, you're literally pulling sentences out of the P O C D.
None of these are my words.
Right. I, I think that it's a good reminder to them. The only other thing that I would love to see, sorry. Sorry, I am totally a mess tonight, excuse me.
I like the music, though.
Okay, I just was reading the coastal resiliency report again, and the new FEMA maps are placing even more of the property underwater eventually. A building that is a public building is usually built with a seventy-year, I think if I'm correct, seventy-year lifespan. So if we are going to rebuild anything on the Shakespeare property, we need to, one, identify what portion of the land is not going to be in the flood zone ten years, ten years out from now. And we also need to say, you know, how sustainable is the rest of that property? Because you can't, you can't, I, I don't know exactly how many acres it is, but a large portion of that property was wetlands and is returning to wetlands, whether we like it or not. A great deal of that, it just so happens that the highest elevation is right where the theater was. So if there is any rebuilding, the footprint of the theater is the one area where, has the highest elevations. My assumption is because it was filled. But those two things ought to be taken in real consideration, particularly with some of the crazy proposals that we've seen over the years of putting in, you know, condos along the Dune there, all that, all that land, none of that land is buildable. And it's never going to be buildable unless the world changes dramatically. So I think that we, I, I don't see it in any of there, but as a planning department, I think we ought to say to them, evaluate carefully what land is suitable. Some of that land is only suitable for parking in non-flood event weather.
Right, that's a good point, anything along our coastline, that should be considered, whether they're considering it.
Well
No, no, but they should.
We are stuck with private property that we have to deal with, that we're going to have to deal with. For us to put something on what is public property and, and create a new problem is unconscionable for a planning, a planning department. We need to make that very clear to, to the town, that no, you cannot be building giant developments or retail centers or anything else. And that even a theater that goes in there, you could design a theater that essentially is a floor up.
Yes.
Like something they would have in the Berkshires, where summertime, the ramps come down, that, those ramps become seating, wintertime, they get pulled up and the water can just wash right through. There is, there are very sensible resiliency projects that could be designed specifically as, as kind of test for that, that should be thought about.
I think that's a very good suggestion, and we'll add that, I think it's very pertinent in today's world. And they, if they're not thinking about it, we should tell
You should have access to the new maps, where, where they've identified portions of that land that is really, it's a flood zone.
I will add that.
We did change the Greenway, the Greenway was going in a loop throughout all of that. The new, the new section that's being built this year, we actually now stop it down at Max Harbor, at the Stone Monument, we just, we're running it there, stopping it right at that point.
Till you know
And coming back out, because we had no idea what was going to be happening, so that's as far as we went.
Any other comments as to, as a group? You know, we may have individual thoughts, but as a planning commission, I thought it was important that they realize there is a plan of conservation and development, and it should be considered. What report?
They haven't put together, are you talking about the old one or the current one that they're working on? Oh, the old one, I can make
Consider the recommendations from the consultant's report.
I, I would, I, I'll send you, I have an electronic copy too, I think, I just remembered, I can send it to you.
Could you send all of us?
Yes, everyone.
Perfect, yeah.
This is the consultant's report from this past year.
This is a report, I think, that was done
Last year?
No.
Two years ago?
No, because
I think way back.
The P O C D is twenty fourteen or thirteen, so this is probably back in twenty ten, there have been
Yeah.
more reports
Yes.
on Shakespeare Theater.
Sometime before twenty ten.
In all likelihood, it probably came about something, sometime after we got the deed from the state, I would bet you.
Probably
When we had to show, when, when we did the million dollar roof repair.
Yeah.
And it probably came out at that point.
Yeah, could very well be, but that, that's a good point. Can I have a motion in a second that we send a letter with the information indicated here to the Shakespeare Task Force?
I move that we that we ask our chairwoman to take the information from the P O C D that's pertinent to the Shakespeare develop, the Shakespeare property, and send that to the current committee, along with current thinking from FEMA and coastal resiliency about the future of the property and developing public buildings.
Okay. Thank you. All in fa, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So that's unanimous. Thank you very much, okay. Eight twenty-one Wood End Road extension of filing.
So the chair just signed the Mylar, but unfortunately, their filing period expires today, I think, May twentieth is today, or May twenty-first? Yesterday, I think. So now they need an extension, and I got this letter from the applicant that states that our initial letter was dated February twentieth, and from May twenty-first to August nineteenth is the next period that they request extension filing, extension of filing. I spoke to the applicant's engineer, and he seems to believe that they should be able to do sometime this week or next week, because the, the Mylar has been signed, but they just need the extension timeframe, because they can't file it otherwise.
Okay, so
Oh, the Mylar is this
The map.
The, the current plans.
Yes, the plans on this plastic sheet that gets recorded in the town clerk's office.
Okay.
So they're asking for an extension to August nineteenth?
They did request this while back, like in April, but I think they may be doing it sooner, but they just need that timeframe, that three-month timeframe.
So if we use the August nineteenth, that should give them plenty of time.
Yes.
They can come earlier.
Anytime.
Okay. Mr. Watson?
What is our, what is our business with them next?
You are, eight twenty-one Wood End Road was the subdivision application that came before you sometime in October when I first started here, when, you know, you remember how the porta potty was a matter of concern, and then they had approval with conditions, they, you know, went to, they, they put a lawsuit, and then they settled. They came back to the commission and they settled, and then, you know, they discussed with the town engineer and the conservation superintendent, Tina Beto, on what needs to be done to mitigate the impacts, and they've taken care of it. Now I got a, a letter from John Casey and Tina, both saying that they're good to go and file a subdivision approval. So once they file it, they can go ahead and build it now. So for them to file this, there is a certain timeframe that they were allowed, like after, within ninety days of approval, they have to do it. So they got approved on February twentieth, I think. So they should have done by now, but because they were going back and forth with the town engineer and conservation administrator, they could not finish their drawings. Now that they have officially finished them, their approval is expiring, so they need another thirty days extension, and in those thirty days, I think they would do it by next week, because the, the regulations say that the commission chair has to sign on the Mylar before it gets filed in the town clerk's office. So that's why Commissioner, Commission Chair Pat Petruski signed it. Now I'll take it back to them and give it to them, and they probably would go next week and just file it. Once it's filed in the town clerk's office, it's legal, now they can go ahead and build it per their drawings.
Okay.
Okay.
I could stop in and see those?
Yeah, you could, I think they do have extra copies too, if you want to take one with
No, I have plenty of paper, plenty of paper.
But I, I won't be there in office tomorrow, so you can come back
I just want to see how they did the wash stations.
Certainly, you can come by anytime, I mean, I would, I would love to keep you connected with John Casey, the town engineer, so I'll talk to him
I'll stop you.
At a time that suits him. Me, three, like me, Jay, and John are going to a workshop tomorrow, so tomorrow's not a good day, but maybe sometime later.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve a, an extension to August nineteenth, twenty nineteen, for the eight twenty-one
I move to approve an extension to eight twenty-one Wood End Road of their Mylar.
Not of their Mylar.
Of the filing.
Of the filing, I'm sorry.
To August nineteenth?
To August nineteenth.
Thank you. Second, thank you, any further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
So that is unanimous, okay, and we're moving to member
Can we waive the rules to include hazard mitigation plan update discussion? Where is it? Oh, we do have
It is in the new.
Oh, I don't have
I don't have, I have the old one, okay.
Yeah. So, let's go, we don't have to waive the rules, let's go with
Okay, so I just got this last Wednesday, and the way this whole process worked was that by the time MetroCog got the consultants hired and the funding in place, we were almost halfway through the timeframe for preparing the plan, and this plan expires in July, and for the town Stratford, it's very critical, because now we are a CRS community, and having an adopted, officially adopted hazard mitigation, natural hazard mitigation plan is a prerequisite for a CRS community. So if you do not have an adopted plan, your CRS status may be at jeopardy, which means that we really need to rush through this. So unfortunately, we don't have enough time to actually go through this with the consultants. I requested them to come to our commission meeting and discuss their findings, but they're, and they're in a mad rush to finish this up. However, I said, you know, I sent my preliminary comments to them last Friday, but I said, we have a commission meeting coming up this Tuesday, I really want to give this opportunity to our commission members to at least, you know, be able to discuss this. So I'll come back with some more comments after the meeting, which they agreed to, even though they might have sent the draft to the state deep for review like this Monday. And FEMA has to review this concurrently too. So I just want to read my comments, and then maybe you can add to this. I've personally dropped off these drafts that relate to Town of Stratford only, because it's a two-hundred-page document, I pulled out everything that discusses Town of Stratford, and I put it in your mailboxes on Friday, because I really wanted you to take a look at this.
Just so you know, I read the whole thing.
That's great, I know you would.
No, because I want to know how we compared to the other towns, and
Exactly.
My anger when I spoke with Mr. Bansky, he, I went point by point, and he said basically that we were in agreement, you and I, a lot of the points, so.
So these are my comments, I said, number one, under acknowledgements, page two, acknowledge me, the town planner, because I worked a lot on this, I coordinated with various departments, and I just, you know, wanted to get acknowledged as a point of contact. Page two dash seven, I said, they were discussing the Plan of Conservation and Development, but not the town's coastal resiliency plan, which is more recent, more up-to-date, and more advanced in terms of the modeling that was done, and it has been officially adopted, so I asked them to, you know, discuss that plan and the Roosevelt Forest Management Plan, which was referred on page four dash twenty-four, but there was no discussion on that on page two dash seven. Page two dash nine, I said, the town has a separate flooding webpage and a town hall main link to discuss the webpage, where they were discussing webpages, they were only talking about the emergency management webpage, but not the main flooding webpage. Under two dash sixteen, I wanted them to include the mayor, the chief of staff, director of public safety and emergency management director, conservation administrator, economic development director, and public works director as part of the team. They only mentioned me, Jay Hibansky from planning and zoning, and town engineer John Casey, but I, I discussed this with all these people separately before I sent the recommendations feedback, yes.
Can you include our W P C A, because that's also a part of our
That's an excellent point, and unfortunately, the W P C A was not contacted, and I'm going to make sure that they're
Well, we're one of the few W P C, W P C As who did not have dangerous flooding in Sandy,
Yes.
when everybody around here was sending sewer out into the bay, so I think that if they're going to say what we've done, that's one of the things they need to say that we've done.
So essentially, this is the team that implements on behalf of the town, so the W P C A cannot be part of this. But I agree with you that the W P C A should be contacted and given an opportunity to, you know, offer their feedback, because based on my experience working in New Haven, this is exactly what happened, that, you know, W P C A was not included, they saw that there was a funding award, they wanted to avail the funding, and FEMA said no, because you were not discussed in the town plan, and this is federal funds, and these are managed by the towns, and we cannot allow you to avail the funding
And we're applying for funding for that, for them.
I'm going to make sure that it goes through the W P C A. Page two dash twenty, they mentioned that Stratford did not choose to opt, chose to opt out of coastal resiliency building workshop that was planned in March. I, you know, based on my understanding, I'd really tried hard to bring the consultant here to do the workshop. But then I hear from others that there was, you know, somebody in emergency management that was contacted, and maybe, you know, they did choose to opt out, because they had a more recent one last year. I would have loved to have a workshop, because we're a CRS community, and we will score points for doing the workshop alone. But, you know, it's a missed opportunity, and maybe I would suggest them to rewrite the sentence a little bit, because I don't want the town to be looking like it's not participant, whereas all the other towns have been participating actively, and they had workshops and meetings in their towns.
Can you, can you include the work that we did with coastal resiliency? Because that was everybody, we worked on that weeks here.
That they did include in the language, they said, we did have some discussion in twenty fourteen, but I would have loved to have it this time around, because the people changed, like I'm new, Jay is new, and the people who are implementing the plan
It was twenty seventeen that we did that.
Well, Jay came in at the tag, and he was not a part of the whole process, so. And section three, my general comment was that, you know, the plan looked like more a piecemeal approach, town by town, but it's a regional plan, there's something that should discuss the regional shared problems, like, you know, for example, the area by the coast near Johnson's Creek, where it is shared between Bridgeport and Stratford, and how can we come at a mutually agreeable solution to protect these areas, or, you know, the underpasses near Surf Avenue, that's again, you know, it's a territory that is very controversial, because there's more Bridgeport and Stratford-related audiences there. So what is the problem for the region? What is our risk as a region has not been, you know, brought up upfront? And that's what I think they should talk about, like all the oil tanks that are by the coast, spill over could happen, and everybody could get affected in the region, not just the Town of Stratford residents. Page four dash four, I just said that the downed power lines are also an issue, not just the downed trees, and they have not been acknowledged, and I said they have to be acknowledged. And page four dash twenty-four, I said, again, mention Stratford's coastal resiliency plan, because all the mitigation actions, we had eighty mitigation actions in a coastal resiliency plan, I went through every single one of those with the town engineer, with the conservation administrator, with the emergency management director, drilled it down to twenty-five main recommendations, removed all redundancy, and sent it to the consultant team. And this was all because we had an official coastal resiliency plan in place, and that hasn't been acknowledged. It was just referring to the P O C D, so I just said that. And again, I think they should highlight the fact that we are a CRS community, we're a Class Eight community, and that's something I would send as a general comment later on too. If you have any other comments, please let me know, and I will include those here. If you have any other comments, please let me know and I will include those here.
Two things. Two things, and I can't be specific right now, but when I went through the, the damage estimates, from what we were, our original damage estimates were, they seem to have been reduced by at least half. Suddenly, for no reason, we haven't shown any, any resiliency projects, but suddenly the, the total damage that would be sustained dropped, our numbers dropped by huge numbers compared to Fairfield's, which actually went up. So suddenly, I don't know if we put dykes up along the-
No, I, I think it's based on how severely we got impacted in the most recent storms because the damage estimates are calculated through a software called Hazis and what it does is it pulls out all the claims that were made in the past few years for insurance purposes by, by private property owners and they get these numbers from FEMA, from the policy, um, numbers there and I think-
Three time claim, all of that.
Yes, and I think maybe it's because Stratford wasn't as impacted as Fairfield.
Here's an issue that is hard to discuss that needs to be discussed. We have five thousand, over five thousand dwellings that are in the flood zone. Those dwellings are not gonna suddenly be in dry, dry land, it's gonna keep getting worse. And when we start talking about tidal flooding and rain event flooding, we're having that already in some of these neighborhoods. They might not, might not be getting into houses, but they certainly are affecting our roadways. I, I think that we, we need to make sure that they're not just talking about major storm events, that what we're talking, what we're looking at is, we're looking at a emergence of the Great Marsh taking in all of the land that's been infilled back going to the nineteen hundreds. So we are looking at massive changes here that is gonna cost us giant amounts of money if, unless we say we're gonna lose twenty percent of our dwellings. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do agree with you.
That's part of the case that needs to be made to MetroCog or to whoever, that granted, we don't have a long spit of Fairfield mega mansions that, do you know what I mean? But we do have whole districts and whole communities here that it will change this town forever if we don't start thinking about it in some kind of way.
Mr. Watson, I agree with you and I think that you bring an interesting point here. Our coastal resiliency plan was based on risk-based decision-making. So what they essentially did, that John Casey and I and Jay were discussing today too in preparation of a workshop tomorrow, that they identified all the properties that are at risk, they estimated a dollar value for these and they annualized the loss estimates for these, like, you know, in, for fifty years' term, how much damage would be occurring for each of these properties, which means at the annual rate, how much is the cost for this property? And they estimated risk, potential risk on these properties based on that. So I think the fact that we have such an advanced plan that estimates risk in real time, you know, like dollar values, that has to be acknowledged in this hazard mitigation plan and say, yes, we didn't have a high impact, we were lucky to escape the last two storms like Irene and Sandy, but moving forward, we are no better than any other coastal community because our risks are higher and our coastal resiliency plan indicates that there will be like six billion dollars of losses.
During, during, during the time that we were doing the resiliency plan, I can remember reading that Stratford was one of three of the most at-risk communities in the state. We were third.
Stratford is what, three of the?
Stratford, Stratford is one of the three most at-risk communities in the state for constant flooding, for flooding events.
Okay.
So that we really need to be at the top of the list.
Do you know what the other two are? Do you remember of you?
I, 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 I wanna say, I wanna say that it could have been, and I'm not quite sure, it could have been the Long Wharf area of-
New Haven, Norfolk.
And it, the other one was very weird, it was like Middletown, someplace where, no, someplace where the, where the Connecticut River overflows its banks in-
Its riverine flooding, okay.
Massive parts of industrial and residential areas that they are just not prepared for at all. And it's so overbuilt in that area that the damage will be catastrophic if we keep having these rain events. So it, it surprised me, but I, that statistic has gotten lost partly because it's a uncomfortable, if you're talking about five thousand people here, that's a lot of constituents that have a right to be very angry if we're not doing what needs to be done for them. So I just think that that was what kind of, I felt was one of the biggest things that we were losing out in the way this report was, was written, particularly with MetroCog's insistence that we are going to become a much more heavily built up residential area that, that's not compatible with the projections for flooding.
I would certainly state that in my comments, but I think it would be a more strong case if you as a commission draft your comments and send it to me and I'll put it on your letterhead and say, these are our planning commission comments and like you are giving to the Shakespeare Task Force, I would suggest you give, um, you know, Mr. Watson can, you know, draft a letter.
Right, my, my, my assumption was this has to be by the nineteenth.
It had to be, but it went through anyway. I sent the preliminary comments that I just read out because I wanted to send something in when the state is reviewing it, but all these details can be added to the final draft.
I don't think it's a done deal-
Okay.
Quite yet, so I-
It'll be out for the public for review too.
This is something we should be fighting about, we need to make our voice heard, I know that.
Well, um, can I have a, a motion to request that Mr. Watson draft a letter?
Mr. Watson is leaving tomorrow morning at eight o'clock for his first vacation in two years. I cannot say that, I, I, my apologies, I, you know I don't say no to things, but I cannot-
Maybe I can draft the letter for you and I will pass it by you and if you want to add something to it, you could add.
I will be happy to do that, I can do it by email.
But I can do it tomorrow too, just so you know.
Okay, uh, that's all right. Mr. Staley?
I just want to be clear on one, I am, the, we're talking natural hazard mitigation plan.
Yes.
We're not talking emergency management.
We're talking that too, but only for natural hazards.
Yeah.
Not for terrorism.
Not for terrorism.
No, just for natural hazards.
So, um, that would be-
That would be earthquakes.
Category four.
Yeah.
Earthquakes, wildfires, flooding, riverine, coastal, landslides, summer storms, tornadoes, winter storms.
Earthquakes.
Mm-hmm.
We, we, we had one, uh, it was at the North End and the South End because the North End also has water problems.
With the earth.
Not just the coastal.
Yes, riverine and we have a section dedicated to that in the plan that talks about riverine and inland flooding and there's some on coastal flooding, they're two different sections.
Okay, thank you.
There is one of the, the, the area north of Sikorsky where there is the old garbage dump, that we ran into this issue when we were doing the W P C A, that that landfill is partly leaching into the Houstonic and it is in low lying lands and that problem is gonna be, as water goes up higher and higher, we are gonna be leaching more and more of the PCBs and everything else that's in that landfill into the Houstonic and it's gonna be coming right down our shoreline, so all the work that we're working to get rid of plating and everybody else's PCBs, we're just gonna be getting a new fresh batch of it from the landfill. So if you want to talk regional, that's an issue that needs to be addressed regionally.
Maybe that could be added.
Sure, I have added that in as my notes, so I'll- I'll draft the letter based on your feedback.
Um, Mr. Watson, could you make a motion that the town planner draft a letter to be-
On behalf of the commission?
On behalf of the commission, yeah, to be forwarded, uh, to MetroCog.
I would love to make a motion that our new town planner graciously write a draft that she can circulate and that our commission will sign correctly, yes?
Yes, I'll sign it, Chair.
Okay.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Vigliotti, second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to read it before I move on.
Yeah, she'll distribute it, yeah.
Yeah, I'll distribute it.
And then I'll come over and sign it. So if you have any questions or issues, send your comments on. Okay, any further discussion otherwise, uh, call for the vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's unanimous. Okay, any member comments and concerns? Hearing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Staley?
Second.
Second by Mr. Watson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's unanimous too.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Roll your head over.
We've got a few things moving along.
Um, yes.
So can I draft a letter and everybody make cases? We might have to meet before you're just signing.
Okay. Could we do it after June first?
Oh.
I think we-
Oh.
Thank you very much. Much obliged.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
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 Okay.